Hello, y'all.
Let me take myself off mute. At least a little bit.
All right, good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, April twenty first, regular school board meeting of the Warrensville Heights City School District. I hope everybody has had a pleasant day and a great week despite our interesting snowstorm this morning.
Really?
Dr. Rock, can you please call the roll?
Here.
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
Here, we're all here and accounted for. Dr. Rock, I don't think you're coming in. Your sound is coming in yet. You're not hooked up. But we're gonna keep moving because we are just a little bit late. Member Gator has graciously volunteered to do the Pledge of Allegiance, so we will have a moment of silence while she does that right now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this point, we're at item one point three and the approval of tonight's agenda. And before we get started, Dr. Rock or Mr. Jolly, are there any items that need to be removed from tonight's agenda?
Yes, I would like to remove item five point seven, item five point seven, contract with the ESC.
Okay.
Oh, we need to move that to a later meeting due to budgeting purposes. Item five point seven, removed.
Alrighty, it will be removed. Thank you. Anything else that needs to change before we get started and approve our agenda? Hearing nothing. Board, can I have a motion on the floor to approve this evening's agenda for April twenty first?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to accept the agenda with the removal of item five point seven.
Yes.
Five point seven, uh, which is the ESC contract.
Thank you.
I second it.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Dr. Rock, can you please call the roll?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes five zero. Next on our agenda is item one point four, approval of the minutes. We need a motion on the floor to approve the minutes for the February third work session, the February seventeenth regular board meeting, the March third work session, the March seventeenth regular board meeting, and the March twenty second special board meeting.
Madam Chair, I move item one point four, pool of the minutes. Looking for the minutes for the following meetings, work session, meeting, February third, two thousand twenty one, regular board meetings, February seventeenth, two thousand one, work session meeting, March third, two thousand twenty one, regular board meeting, March seventeenth, two thousand twenty one, and special board meeting, March twenty second, two thousand twenty one.
Thank you. May I have a second?
A second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Dr. Rock, can you please call the roll? Or do you have, um, excuse me, Dr. Rock, do you? Go ahead.
So I notice that we have six different, um, meetings to approve.
Is there any way that we can get these sooner? That was a lot to review. Okay, so typically, how far back should we expect these to be? Okay. All right, thank you. That's all I have, ma'am.
Dr. Rock, I think you're still muted.
Yeah, you are muted. Yeah, I tried to unmute him, but it won't let.
How about now?
You're good now. Thank you.
Is it good now?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, you're good.
Can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Gator?
Yes.
Mrs. Mooman?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes, motion passes five zero. And thank you for agreeing to, you know, make sure we get the meetings a little sooner. All right, next on the agendas, item one point five, public participation. Mr. Jolly, did we have any?
As of four o'clock today, we have not received any public participation. We do encourage people to send an email to publicparticipation@w h c s d dot org, but we have not received any as of today at four P M.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. Next on our agenda is the superintendent report, and I'm gonna hand the mic over to Mr. Jolly.
Yes, um, tonight's reporter, I have a, a three-layered, uh, report. First, I would like, uh, Dr. Reynolds. Dr. Reynolds, today is gonna give an update on our project thirteen. This is a new initiative. Uh, we, over the past month, we've seen some traumatic cases of, um, mental health issues, not only with our students, but with some of our alumni. Board member, uh, Gator and others have came and, and, and really voiced concern about what's going on with our alumni and also with our, our regular students. Uh, Dr. Reynolds is our director of health and wellness. Has been charged with coming up with a program to assist us in addressing that need and being there for both our students and our recent alumni. So, Dr. Reynolds, uh, without further ado, if you could please present what our new strategy would be.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me a moment just to kind of discuss, uh, a few things that we've been working on that we find is extremely important to what we're doing while educating our students. I just need to, uh, go ahead and place this. I'm unable to share a screen, Mr. Jolly.
Okay, go ahead. Hold on, here it comes. All right, you should be able to now.
So the focus tonight is really a discussion on mental health. I'm from a time where a discussion on mental health was not something that was even anything that we ever did. Uh, when we were going through some things, uh, if it wasn't physical or if it wasn't visible, then our, our parents, my parents, would tell us to mainly just shake it off. Those are not those times. We have students, and, and please understand that I am a proponent of building students and, and, and making them stronger people and resilient folks, but some of our kids need just a little bit more. Some of them need just some assistance in building those skills of resilience and having that support that they need to, to understand what they're going through. Tonight, what we're gonna be doing, we're gonna just be talking about some of the things that, uh, we've noticed that have occurred recently with our students. And with COVID, it's just kind of, uh, doubled, uh, some of the things that we are anticipating for our students in regards to, to mental health. So, uh, when we began this, we started just a few of us, really just having a discussion and reflection to, uh, a recent situation with one of our, our, uh, former grad, one of our graduates. And we were really just brainstorming, coming up with ideas of how we should be able to respond to some of our students and some of their needs. Now, individually, we do that as a building. Uh, we have personnel in the building that, you know, are, are basically keyed into doing those things, but what we needed to do was to create a plan for our district. So, uh, some, with doing some of the research, what we were able to find were a few things that were, were basically issues nationwide, where, um, in this climate, seven out of ten teens are, are experiencing some trouble when we're talking about with mental health. Fifty-five percent of the teens were experiencing anxiety, forty-five percent excessive stress. Sixty-one percent of our teens said that the COVID pandemic increased their feelings of just loneliness. Uh, uh, and as you can read on, read through this thing, is really telling us that the things that we're seeing that our kids are experiencing is not just isolated to, to our community, it is not just isolated to Ohio, it is a nationwide issue that has to be addressed within each building. Through my research, I saw that there were some states like New York where it is mandated by the state that, you know, there is mental health education within the school. So what we're trying to do is the work ahead is gonna be really just changing the perspective of how our community views the topic of mental health. Uh, as I said, I'm from, I'm from the South, but I think this is kind of nationwide where in my community, it wasn't something that we saw as, as important because it wasn't visible. Some of our kids, like I said earlier, are going through some things that we, you know, we, we don't know about because they're, they're struggling in silence and it's not visible for anyone to see. Uh, some of the signs are really hard to pick up. So that's why it's important that we are developing some sustainable efforts, that we're providing education to our teachers on, on some of the red flags that are not as obvious. So some of the things that we need to do to try to help kids and, and just providing education to our students and letting them know that the things that they're feeling are, are the things that we can talk about, are the things that we can address. And it's really just changing the, the mindset of, of everyone to, to, to acknowledge the fact that addressing mental health is what we should be doing. We always talk about mind, body, and soul, so let's focus on our minds in, in regards since when we're talking about, uh, mental health. So what we decided, what we did was we started with creating a framework. And what the framework is basically just a guidelines from the district on the things that we're gonna be doing to just ensure that we're addressing it. It is important that we are systematic about what we're doing. You know, we, we've done some great things over time where individual folks have done some individual things with working with kids, building relationships, but we have to be systematic about what we're doing to address the needs of, of our students. So what this is, is our multi-tier support system, um, where we're looking at this, a lot of you have seen these things with, uh, a, a lot of different models and is definitely something that is effective for what we're trying to do. So we start by just looking at the building for everyone. Everyone, we're, we're pushing relationship building, um, school-wide and every building for every student, mental health literacy, to just talk about what mental health is, some things that you can do to, to relieve stress. A universal screener, uh, what a universal screener is, is basically a survey for every student in the building and it helps us to identify some of those kids who may be suffering in silence, but those surveys are kind of pinpointing some of the things that we need to address. Uh, and also just PBIS is something that we're doing in the building and we're doing a huge kickoff at the beginning of the year. What PBIS is, is basically expectations of the building behaviors on, on how we should respond to certain situations in certain locations in the building, and that's something that you'll hear a lot more about very soon. And just an S E L focus, we hear about S E L, but district, we have to, uh, commit to being focused on social emotional learning. So what that will do, that would, that bottom line where you see the blue will basically answer some of our issues with about eighty percent of our students. But then there's another percentage, the next level of students, about fifteen percent of our students that are more targeted, where we need to do some smaller groups, we need to do some one-on-ones, we need to do some progressive, some progress monitoring. So we're, we're, we're watching and seeing if the things that we're doing for them are working. We're doing some case management where there's some mentoring that goes into place, and those are for about fifteen percent of our students that we're gonna be considering as our targeted students. And then as we move forward, there's five percent of our students that we, uh, that are intensive. These are students who are, have been diagnosed to have some, some, some issues, some mental challenges, some challenges across that we need to now collaborate with some outside forces. We need to, to now do some crisis intervention. We need to do more things for them, some things that are a little more prescriptive. And this, this five percent, while it is going to be more of a referral type of process for that five percent, we're still continuing to support students in the, as targeted and as universal. So because they are now in that five percent, doesn't mean we're just kind of letting them go. That means that we're still gonna do those same things because we need to be involved in every aspect of how we're servicing our kids. So this is kind of just the framework of what we're doing. So, so now that we, we had that small group including Mr. Jolly on this, now we're gonna take it to the buildings where we're now pulling in the social workers, we're now pulling in, um, um, our guidance counselors, we're now pulling in the, uh, parent, um, uh, liaisons where we're coming in and really trying to figure out exactly what we're gonna do, what those small groups will look like, what those interventions will look like for each one of the buildings, how we're gonna be recording this and tracking the progress of our students, because the last thing we want to do is for our kid to, to fall in between the gaps. And then now we're reflecting like, what could we have done? Let's have those things in place so we are, um, we are not just responding to the need, but we are being proactive to what our kids are needing. So Project Thirteen is the other end of that. What we need to do, and this is something that we've been working on and I've been working on for some time, but at the beginning, it was more of just kind of making sure that we were in front of our graduates because all of us have been in situations, or a lot of us have been in situations where after graduation or during your high school years, that maturity level really hadn't kicked in. Uh, so years or year or years after you graduate now, you have an opportunity to see what this world looks like and some of those things that you wish you'd done. You don't know where to go now. You don't know how to, to develop whatever skills you need to, to attain the job that you're looking for. And you're just kind of floating out there, which can affect or impact your mental health as where, as well. So what we're trying to do is connect with our recent graduates to do some workforce development, career planning, continuing education, and mental health piece, because if they're going through those things, we want to know about it because we already have something set up in the building that's gonna help respond to the kids that we have in the building. And those same things can, can be used to respond to our, uh, recent graduates. And it also with mentoring. Kids just want to, I have kids that I've mentored for at least about fifteen to twenty years now. They're grown and have families and they still reach out to me now just to ask simple questions. They'll send me a text, hello, how you doing, old man? You know, they, they do those sort of things, but it is all about just making sure that we continue to be a resource for the kids that we, we've been in contact with. So the things that we're gonna need to consider with moving forward is looking at our staff and seeing where we could increase those efforts, focusing on culture coaches. We have culture coaches throughout the district, but we also need to look at culture coaches on the secondary level. Culture coaches we have currently are, are for our elementary schools and they're doing an outstanding job. When I was at the, the high school, I was very jealous of those culture coaches because they were great choices and they do a great job with the kids over at elementary school. So secondary, we need more of this, social workers, et cetera. Partnerships with mental health organizations, we have a partnership that we're pursuing now to do a little more things with Beach Brook. Uh, we've been in contact with them, we've spoken with and kind of given our vision of how we want to. They are very open. We, we have another meeting with them on next week. Professional development for our staff. How do we develop our staff to ensure that they have those skills, uh, strategies to, to also, because we're talking about changing mindsets. So if we're just changing the building mindset, which is great, we're, we're, we're missing a key point. Now we need to look at parents. Give parents some skills of some things to look for at home when their kids are, are being, are, are a little distracted or they're a little disconnected. What are some things you can do? How can you engage them? What are some signs that you need to look for? So it needs to be just kind of a, a well-rounded type of, of, of strategy where we're hitting every aspect. Where we're looking at the community, we're looking at the school, schools, and we're looking at the home and just making sure everyone is on the same, same, uh, page. And last, um, we need to also consider crisis hotlines, chats, they have those. And, and with those organizations that we're working with, we will be pushing our kids because, you know, um, everyone is not gonna be available two o'clock in the morning when a kid is going through something, when they have all types of thoughts going through their mind. So we need to have something that's gonna be twenty-four seven. If the kid is, is getting into, um, having some, some struggles, that they have an outlet that they know that they'll be able to reach someone. Uh, so, so that's the gist of what we're trying to do and we'd love to have your support and, and to really just focusing on the mental health of our current students and our recent graduates.
So this time, does anybody have any questions for Dr. Reynolds? Dr. Reynolds, when, when, we have a final plan. Because we definitely need to find a plan as soon as possible. Our kids are in, in need. So when, when you plan to bring the final plan to the board?
Well, the final plan we can have in place, uh, within the next two weeks. Uh, all we need to do is kind of figure out just the details. And we, and we understand that we have to get this thing in place because we don't want to miss any kids while we're, while we're planning. So some of those parts will already be in place, you know, discussing with guidance counselors, discussing with the social worker. You know, those things are already in place, but we want to ensure that we have something that's solid that we can move forward and those partnerships with, with Beach, uh, Beach Brook, and we also have Heart to Heart that's in the building as well. And they're, they're a huge help to, to what we're trying to do, but everything should be in place within the next two weeks. Uh, we'll be meeting again this week, uh, just to kind of finalize some of the things. And next week, we're meeting with Beach Brook once again, as I stated earlier, to really kind of finalize some things that we're trying to do.
All right, well, I appreciate that, Dr. Reynolds. Anybody have any questions for Dr. Reynolds?
I do. I have a quick, I have two quick questions. And I don't know if this, this might be in the final plan, just how are you planning to reach out to our graduates and reengage them?
Great, great question. Uh, we still have those addresses in the system of where now we, we know that some of those addresses are, have changed, but we're also gonna be using social media as well to, to engage, you know, the, the recent graduates. There will be a, um, a Google, uh, form that will be placed online so that those recent graduates can go ahead and patient their most recent information so that we can get a hold of them. Word of mouth, you know, once you tell a few of our former graduates, they're still in contact with their friends, pass those, that information around. Because, you know, just, just recently, within the last month, I ran across two recent graduates who said, hey, um, can I come back? And like, uh, you can't come back, but we can still help you. So, so there, there are kids that are out there who, who want our help, who, who need our help. So, so we're gonna be using mailings, we're gonna use those phone calls as well. We're still have those numbers out there for those parents who can also respond online and, and provide that information. And using social media, Instagram is amazing when we're trying to reach young folks. So those are, are, are the three kind of avenues we're gonna pursue to, to reach out to our folks.
Yeah, I'm assuming that's the same avenue we're gonna follow with the parents of our current students. Okay.
The same avenues, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Ms. Gator?
Yeah, so I don't, I'm not gonna hit you guys with my questions. Um, I'd kind of like to get over and, and really plan is. Um, excuse me. If the board doesn't mind, I'd just like to read something to you that, so you kind of understand why I think this was important. Not gonna say the individual's name, but this is, this, this is what her parents felt needed, they said. They said she was a proud alumni of Warrensville Heights High School and graduated in two thousand and seventeen. She always believed Warrensville Heights City School District was more than a school, than a school district, than a community, but it said it was a milestone of greatness. After leaving the school district for a short time, she found herself back at Warrensville Heights High School, which was an indescriptible form of her that nobody ever knew. She was challenged, pushed, cared for, and motivated throughout her entire school year. She couldn't imagine spending her years anywhere else. Each time she did, she ended up, I think, where she belonged. I thought this was important because this young lady, um, and I know there's other students out there that, that felt the COVID history was a place for them. Um, so I just want to make sure we're giving them the resources they need, whether they're here in the school or, or off at college or, or in the workforce. So I, I, I read all this because I want to thank you, um, for taking the time, Mr. Reynolds, to come up with this. Not only for cheap, obviously, her parents felt the same. And then, you know, they, they did point that to give a special thank you to some, some counselors and teachers, principals, and, and of course, everyone's favorite, Mrs. Steve. So thank you guys again for, for, for doing this. I appreciate it. And I, and I would like to see the final plan when you guys put it off.
Yes, ma'am.
Also, Dr. Reynolds, I, I want to applaud you for taking initiative to do something like this. I think our scholars need it. You know, they graduate from Warrensville High, but they still want to be part of it. And to get those, um, those actual graduates to engage is something that we've been needing for this district. So I appreciate the effort and your team and Superintendent Jolly.
Go ahead, Ms. Barbara.
Coming from, uh, a social worker's perspective, it's really hard when you lose someone that you truly know. I had a student from kindergarten and my last contact with her is at high school. So it hurts really bad when you learn of something of such a great loss. She was, this person I'm talking about was a fantastic student, beautiful. So I would never expect or suspect anything was wrong. But yet, like you said, Dr. Reynolds, there's a lot of stuff goes on in a young person that we don't know and we can't, we don't see it. But we have to open up a road for them to feel that they can come back or that we are here for them. And I, I just want the parents to know that we are always here for our young people. Whatever you need, please just ask or tell us and we will make sure you get that. Thank you, Dr. Reynolds.
I do want to add that that alumni coordinated position will also help us with this, uh, this initiative. So we, we haven't got a lot of, um, hits on it yet, so we have put some more advertisement out to try to get more people to apply. But I think that that connection with our alumni is something that we have missed and that's something that we have to correct along with the work that Dr. Reynolds is doing. Um, that connecting our alumni with, back with the district is something that we need to maintain and continue moving forward. I know that, um, any, any other questions about this? I know we, we want to kind of proceed forward because I got Steve and Doug on here. Steve and Doug, um, would, would like to talk about the John Dewey, um, project that's on the agenda tonight and just give you a, a, update on, on construction and everything else. That'd be real short and brief on that update. Steve and Doug?
I, I'm gonna hand it off to Doug because Doug, you put this all together and let's, I know you, uh, we have a limitation on time. Doug?
I think, um, I think you received a board memo update that I sent with, basically with the, the site plan. What we're requesting is, um, one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars for Infinity, um, to bring on contractors to go ahead and to develop the existing baseball field and develop a new softball field at John Dewey. And so what they're gonna be doing is they'll be stripping the, uh, the infield's and they'll be bringing them up with some clay and some soil. They'll go ahead, they'll add some drainage, um, they'll add new fencing and backstop for the softball field. They'll refinish the backstop and the fence at the baseball field. Um, we're also going to remove the tennis courts and the asphalt that's over in that area and that fence. And then they'll clean up the whole site. They'll have street sweeping, so it's, it's kind of all-inclusive. And what this does is it helps mitigate the issue of us taking the, the fields offline for the high school and the middle school that we had to do. And I'm happy to answer any of the questions. I did get, um, three different competitive pricings so, so that we were comfortable with the price. Um, and, and they're actually lined up, uh, Chieftain is, is available to start. So with your approval, we think we can get them started next week and it's, um, I'm told it's about two weeks worth of work that they're looking at doing, weather permitting.
Right. Uh, I, I do want to add this, we're using permanent improvement funds. And with the movement to John Dewey, we, we recognize that we're gonna have to put a little more investment in John Dewey, um, to get it ready for the middle school. We did a walkthrough today. We, we're gonna have to paint on the classrooms inside of John Dewey also. Those classrooms need to be painted and updated. Um, the rest of the building's in pretty good shape, but it's gonna, we're gonna need a fresh coat of paint inside. So we'll be, I mean, we, that'll be, um, also done during the month of May, um, getting fresh paint in John Dewey. As Steve and Doug stated, you know, we have two years in John Dewey. Currently, our baseball teams have nowhere to practice, nowhere to play. So preferably, if we could get this done soon, uh, maybe our seniors might get a home game before they graduate. So that's our goal, to try to get this done as soon as possible. Any other questions or?
I have one. This not, this price has already been included in our budget, correct? The hundred and seventy-six thousand, that's nothing new, right?
Hundred and thirty-six thousand. It is. I'll, I'll let Dr. Rock answer that.
Excuse me? I can't.
Yeah, I think you're still on mute, Dr. Rock.
Um, he, I can repeat what he says. He said it's a new item. It's part, it's, we're using our P R fund, the Permanent Improvement Fund. But it's, that fund is used to improve our facilities and things. So with facilities coming off, these are some of the funds we would use that maybe Eastwood would have used at, um, John Dewey anyway. So we're just using the Permanent Improvement Fund to put the baseball fields there because we don't have any in the, in the city or district at this time. And then, and we won't have any until twenty, two thousand twenty-three, tw- really twenty-four, where we won't have baseball fields back in it, in Warrensville at, at the current site. Because with that delay in the construction, they'll be using where the baseball fields at, as a launching site for the trucks and all the other things. they'll be using where the baseball fields at as a launching site for the trucks and all the other things. So as we go into the school in twenty through twenty-four, the where the middle school at now is where the baseball fields were at, they'll be still using that for the destruction. The the next year down to high school and all of that, so that'd be the the launching area. So this investment allows us to have baseball for the next three years in the city. Uh, without that, we would be in the same position we are now where we don't have any place for the kids to practice or play. Uh, Doug, is it, did I miss something on that?
No, no, you covered it all.
Okay.
And and the the last thing is, is right now it'll be M P I funds. When Steve and Doug come under budget on our master facility plan, more than likely, the funds will go over into our construction funds for the phases.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so um, that concludes that report, and then I just have a couple of dates. So there would be um just two uh additional updates. So the community tours, we never gave people opportunity to view and this building, the community to see the building. So what we're we're only do is set up two dates, May twenty-first and May twenty-second. The flyers will be coming out relatively soon, May twenty-first from four-thirty to seven-thirty.
Twenty-first.
From four-thirty to seven-thirty.
Four-thirty to seven-thirty.
Okay, I I will remind everybody that our voices are picking up really easy.
Okay, I'll talk softer.
No, it's not you.
It's not you, it's probably me.
Yeah, just just, and it's hard to get her on and off mute, so just try to remember to.
And then May twenty-second from ten A M. to two P M., that's a Saturday. Now, in order to get the tour though, you're gonna have to go and vent bright and get a ticket. That's how we got control who comes and who doesn't. So we will be giving that information, so people will register to get the tour. So the tour will be done by our principals and teachers here at the school. Um, so that's a very important date. Also important date, I just want to go over um the final roar, which is May twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. That is the last um event at the middle school. I also want to go over that the middle school last day of school would be May twenty-eighth. We have to shut the middle school down early so that the teachers can pack the next week. Um, due to construction, we have to be off the middle school on June eleventh. So the next week will be packing, we'll be moving the middle school like the sevens and eights. The middle school students for extended school year will be at the high school. So the middle school students will be at the high school for extended school year. And then the middle school will be moved to John Dewey the week of June seventh to ninth. Graduation is Wednesday, June second, and it will be at the municipal center. It will be a hybrid of both. Uh, the video presentation is last year and some M, some speeches and um and and some speeches. Um, extended school year, this parent, so parents have until the thirtieth of April to sign, to sign up. So we extended it to April thirtieth. We are making calls every day for parents to sign up, the schools are making the call. We want to have at least eighty percent of our students participate in extended school year. Teacher signups, we have teacher signup next week for teachers who are interested and also extended school year. Um, that is about it, it's a lot of other things that I will tell at our first meeting in May, give an update on all the moving parts with the bus garage and so forth. Also, that you're aware of what we're doing with the bus garage, what what things are happening with that on the moves of the definitive moves and also the auction. I can't say that the auction, if tonight is the board approves the resolution for us to to auction off their excess items that we have at John Dewey and at Eastwood and also at the middle school. We have a thirty-day advertising period for the auction. So they'll be advertised for thirty days, people be able to be here for thirty days. And then that second week in in June, we will um actually have the the exact the auction. I mean, they'll be able to come pick this stuff up. I have more information about that, we're still finalizing the details of the auction and how that goes. But basically what we're doing, um, is getting rid of the furniture at John Dewey so that the middle school furniture can move in. And then we're clearing Eastwood out, so Eastwood is being cleaned out in preparation to be demo. Um, so we have a lot of things going on, that's just a a small summary of things. But I just wanted to give you an update on the moving parts that are moving quite quickly at this time. Are there any questions, are there, are there any questions? All right, well, I appreciate, I I will keep you updated as things happen, as I normally do, send emails and and call. Um, but we are moving very fast, we have multiple projects this summer, a lot of projects this summer that we're working on now and and trying to get them all complete as we start next year. And also, we have um negotiations with the union that'll be starting next week.
Thank you, Mr. Jolly.
Okay, let me pull up the agenda.
Okay, next on your agenda is item one point seven is to treasurer's report.
Yes, tonight I don't have any uh presentation because there's just two items that I wanted to cover. The first is that the district received a clean audit as we discussed. And we also received the Ohio Auditor of State Award. This award is presented for excellence in financial reporting in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles gap and in compliance with applicable laws for the fiscal year ended two thousand twenty. So there's the award right there, which is great for the district. And then the other item is uh on the agenda tonight is a resolution for the board to have the option to get criminal uh in uh insurance errors and emissions share and dishonesty insurance for uh employees that were normally bonded in lieu of bonding. Right now, we get a bond for the treasurer, the superintendent and board president. Each of those bonds are fifty thousand dollars of coverage and it's about six hundred dollars cost. What this will do is this will allow our insurance carrier to give us a quote on substantially more coverage that uh goes up to a million dollars of coverage. So the coverage is a lot more, but we have to have this resolution in place before they can give us the quote and before we could look at that option. So that's on the agenda for tonight. And then that completes my section.
Thank you. Dr. Rock, before we move to your section, should we um vote on two point one and two point two separately?
Uh, no, we don't have to, yeah, we don't have to vote on that separately.
I wasn't sure, I wanted to ask. So at this point, if we can have a motion on the floor for us to approve by consent agenda treasurer's report and financials recommendations for items two point one and two point two. And then once we pass the motion, we'll open the floor for discussion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move item two in the consent treasurer's report and financial recommendation. I'm looking for items two point one and two point two.
My second.
Thank you, it's been moved improperly seconded and board, I will open the floor for discussion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to get, if I can, I'd like to get clarification, I'm gonna pull this up because I can't see the um, hold on a minute. All right, so the resolution, so it doesn't say that we are, that that this is needed to get a quote. Um, to to me, I thought this was something that we were voting on to get some updates, some kind of way to state that it's a best or quote and that we're not actually voting or or is that resolution set?
You're approving the resolution to get coverage in lieu of bonds if you opt to. So by doing that resolution, you could do that this year in the future. The resolution will stand, but that's just making it so you could get, so you have the option to get uh co- coverage in lieu of bonds. And uh about two years ago, we had that uh Neola policy where the law changed where school districts can get this type of option. And quite frankly, it's because the bond um performance bonds, the coverage is so much lower and it's it's obsolete. So uh in essence, the coverage on your treasurer and superintendent and board president are fifty thousand dollars each. So once it's fifty thousand dollars, that's the coverage that you have. But by doing this in lieu of bonds, you could get a million dollars of coverage or you could even pay for even more coverage than that. So this is just a resolution accepting that you would do in lieu of bonds if you decide to. Does that help explain your question? Because I really couldn't hear it, hear your question clearly.
So I guess I'm not quite sure, are we saying, so it doesn't point to dishonesty or pay with with fifty thousand dollars right now and you're saying it could go up to a million? I- is this like for theft or what what are we, I I guess I don't understand.
If I can, if I can ask a question, I think it might clarify. Right now, this is, this is the, the bond is for if we do any of the mis-mal or non-feasance. And we have, this covers the three roles in the event there's any wrongdoing by the three roles.
Yes.
And I think the question that is wanting to be asked is with the approval of this resolution to go to the insurance, what is the cost of that coverage?
Oh, that's, we have to get, by having this, we have to have this resolution in place.
Right, but once, but I think the
Next month, next month, we we will have the insurance quote and their proposal. That's, so this is like a pre-step, that's why I'm having it done now.
I think that's what Mimi was trying to ask.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was trying to ask, but so will you be coming back to the a recommendation on whether or not this is something you need to do or what the votes are? How, how, what would the next step be like?
Once you approve this now, then the uh our insurance ca- carrier can give us a quote and they could tell us how much coverage, if there's more coverage, they could give us levels of coverage and the board can make a decision and get that coverage in lieu of bonds. So in other words, the way that they have the law set up on this, it's like you can't do this without having a resolution to where the board accepts that they would potentially do uh insurance coverage in lieu of bonds. They need that to be set first, that like establish, it's sort of like your, it becomes your board policy. Then you can go and get the coverage quotes from the insurance carrier. So next month uh or either May or June, the insurance carrier will be bringing a proposal to me. But once I show them that you approved this resolution, they can go and get the quotes for that type of insurance.
All right, and the quotes, will, will the, before a final decision is made, will the court have the opportunity to weigh in on whether it's something we want to do?
Oh, yes, one, one, one hundred percent. All this is doing is just saying that you're entertaining uh that you're approving in lieu of bonds if you want to go there. It's not saying that you are going in lieu of bonds. And then so we would get the quote and I could show, and what I will do is I'll present to you the exact cost of the bonds and how much coverage that we were getting on those and the exact cost of the coverage of the insurance. And then you can make a comparison and and we can make a, the board makes a decision on what route you want to go. You could certainly stay with the regular performance bonds and not make the change.
Okay, all right, I'm good, thank you.
I think this is more required on the insurance end too. They need this re- resolution in place before they can actually quote it.
Do you recall the policy it was to the question? Do you remember how long the vote was? I can do some research.
Yeah, I'll have to look at, look back up, it it's, it was on insurance coverage. It was definitely, it was at the most two years ago, if not a year ago.
Okay, thank you.
It probably was two years ago because yeah, it was uh, it was two years ago.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, board, are there any other questions? It was a good conversation, good dialogue. Hearing nothing else, Dr. Rock, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Moonman? Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Gator?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes, motion passes five zero, so we will look forward to hearing what comes back as far as the quote is concerned.
Most definitely.
Then we can make a decision from there. Thank you so much. Next on our agenda is item three, we needed a motion on the floor to approve item three point one termination.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept item three point one termination of an employee.
Thank you, may I have a second? It's been moved improperly seconded, board, is there any discussion?
None, Madam Chair.
All right, hearing none, Dr. Rock, can you please call the vote?
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Gator?
Yes.
Mrs. Moonman? Mr. Roberts?
Of staying.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes, motion passes four with one extension. Next on our agenda is our cons- um items four point one, we need a motion on the agenda to approve by consent agenda superintendent's recommendations and presentations for board action classified staff, and this is going to be items four point one through four point five.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept item four consent uh superintendent's recommendations and presentations for board action classified staff as stated items four point one through four point five.
Thank you, may I have a second? It's been moved improperly seconded, board, the floor is open for discussion.
Well, I could just add that the van drivers is a replacement, we don't have any van drivers at this time. We twelve-month um secretaries of replacement also, so that was a boss replacement.
Thank you, sir. There's no further discussion, Dr. Rock, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Gator?
Yes.
Mrs. Moonman? Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes, motion passes five zero. Next on our agenda, we need a motion on the floor to approve by consent agenda superintendent's recommendations and presentations for personal and programs, and this is going to be items five point one, five point two, five point three, five point four, five point five, five point six, five point eight, five point nine, five point ten, and five point eleven. Because as we agreed, it'd be prior to the meeting, five point seven was removed from tonight's agenda.
Correct, Madam Chair, I move that we accept as a consent agenda items five point one and five point six and then items five point eight through five point eleven.
May I have a second? It has been moved improperly seconded. Board, the floor is now open for discussion.
I I would like to just highlight five point four, which is to John Dewey um ball fields. Five point five is the resolution to approve us moving forward with the internet auction. Um, i-ready is what we use um to help our students diagnose where they are. Um, five one and five two are special ed uh resolutions. Um, the Renaissance Math is a math program that we use. Also, um, the left bank consulting will help us identify and analyze our science curriculum and see what's working and what's not. On technology purchase, this is a purchase that we made last year. We never received the computers, so we canceled that purchase and redid the purchase to add more to the purchase. Um, and then the last one is STEAM integration specialist coordinator, um, using our title two funds, this position. We we have a brand new spanking STEAM room in this building. We have two new STEAM rooms coming to our new school. And this is position will integrate STEAM um into our curriculum. This person would teach classes and so forth, I did send the job description, it is attached. Uh, again, just taking our curriculum to the next level, um, best way in in trying to be innovative and creative, using our title dollars um to benefit our students.
I have one quick question, Madam. Um, item five, left bank consulting. Will you be able to provide the board one feedback on on recommendations and how long for them to to review?
I'm not sure about how long the review will be, uh, but I will get the information to the board as soon as possible. And when we get the findings, they definitely will be presented by the curriculum team as soon as we get them, you will get the findings also.
All right, thank you.
I think you're on mute, Ms. Barbara.
Oh, okay, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Jolly, based on, um, as of today's date, what percentage of parents have agreed for the extended?
School year, so as of yesterday, I didn't get today's number, we have six hundred fifty-eight students accounted for out of seventeen twenty-nine. So we not even a half, we almost at a third of the students accounted for. So the push is now, um, we making the calls, I may, I I'm doing calls every day. Only six hundred twenty-nine students were accounted for as of to yesterday. So we need that number to be at seventeen twenty-nine. That's the number we need every, well, it won't be seventeen twenty-nine because the seniors are took off that list.
Right.
You gotta think, um, it's about a hundred twenty seniors that'll be off that list, so about fifteen hundred, um, eighty students we, we need to account for. So our principal's been charged with getting that number and, and working hard to make sure every student's accounted for, either they come in or they not. Um, and that would dictate how the staff can go for the summer program. But we want, we want everybody to participate, we want every teacher to participate. So we budgeted the money, we had a meeting yesterday where we are using title one, we use our S R funds to, um, ensure that happens. And, um, eighty-five percent of the responses so far have said yes to this extended school year. Eighty-five with that, six hundred twenty-nine. And that, I, I believe that the June meeting, we'll be able to come back with the analysis from the left bank and so, and so the June meeting, um, we will present that information.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, Dr. Rock, can you please call the roll for section five?
Mrs. Moonman?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Gator?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes, motion passes five zero. Uh, we then move down to, uh, section nine, and I just want to do one quick announcement, because after that, we'll be going into executive session. Um, and since we did move executive session to the end of tonight's meeting, we would like to just let the community know that there are, I think the bulk of us are registered to attend OSBA's Board Leadership Institute, um, virtual conference this Friday and Saturday. It will be a half a day, uh, each day. And then in our May work session meeting, we will be providing updates and overviews on the sessions that we attended um, for both our annual NSB conference as well as the BLI conference. Um, looking forward to it. There was a lot of good information shared at Nationals this year and looking forward to seeing what's going to be shared with us at BLI over this weekend. So, um, just want to let everybody know, you are more than welcome to hang on the YouTube channel with us be as, but we will be going into executive session. And then as soon as we exit executive session, we will be adjourning tonight's meeting. Um, so if you're here, we're glad you're here. Thank you for attending. It's good to see the numbers each week. And as we move into the agenda, if I can have a motion on the floor to enter into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official or regulated individuals, students, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee or regulated individual.
Madam Chair? I move that we accept. I can't, I can't see the agenda, Madam Chair. No, you got it here. I've got it up. I've moved that we move into executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official or regulated individuals, students, or the investigation of charges or complaints against against a public employer or regulated individual.
Thank you, may I have a second? It has been moved and properly seconded. We are going to go into, um, executive session. Mr. Jolly, if you can move us into our breakout room?
Everybody should be there. Ray should be gone too. Yeah, we could go to, it won't be long.
I won't be gone.